Board of Commissioners, this time I ask you to please bow your head in prayer and supplication for protection for our country, our state, and our community, and for the provision of our people.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us of our trespasses, as we forgive those who have trespassed against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thou is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Right now, I will ask our county manager to reveal any adjustments to the agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. We have one removal from the agenda, which is to remove economic development from closed session.
Thank you. Any others? I'll ask if there's a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted. So move. Motion by Commissioner Hap. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Pose like sign.
Aye.
And for the record, Commissioner Marvin Norman is attending remotely, and there's about a five to six second delay between the time he hears us call for a vote and the time he answers. So we'll have those pauses until he chimes in. There are no presentations of any special recognitions or awards this evening. There are likewise no appointments before the board. We have two public hearings. The first is a public hearing to consider a request in regard to a text amendment to the Land Development Code on the airport overlay. And Mr. Matthew Todd will tee that up. We had an extensive discussion of this matter at our last meeting and pre-agenda, and this is the formal public hearing.
Good evening to the board. The request we have opposed tonight is this text amendment. It's been in the works for a good little while. We had brought a text amendment last year, or possibly even end of 19, kind of as a Band-Aid to fix some of the issues we were experiencing with the current regulations for the airport. And after that, we reached out to the city because their regulations for the airport did not match our regulations. They had, over the years, both had made amendments, and they were, they were two separate documents. So in working with the airport manager and the consultant that's on call for the airport, we developed a new overlay. Essentially, it's the same area. The language is very similar, but if you'll notice the two maps on the screen, the map on top, it shows basically to the west and east of the airport as part of the overlay. Based on feedback from the airport manager and the consultant, the area to the west of the airport was not needed in the overlay, and it was, it was over-restrictive for uses that were, were in that direction. So the, the map on the right hand of the screen is the new overlay, and if you could think of it like an upside-down wedding cake, as you move out from the airport, those elevations increase, and a structure could be taller as you get further from the airport. The City of Statesville has approved this exact same language, this same map, and the Airport Commission voted to support the amendment, and our planning board unanimously supported the amendment. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Todd? At this time, I will open the public hearing. I do not have anyone that has signed up to be heard, but I would inquire of anyone in attendance if you'd like to be heard on this matter. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Ask if there's any further comment, and ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I serve on the Airport Commission for this board, and I'd like to make a motion for approval, to recommend approval of the zoning text amendment, amendments, and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted 2030 Horizon Plan, and that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest, and furthers the goals of the 2030 Horizon Plan because it aims to make necessary updates to address the growth at the city regional airport.
Motion by Commissioner Hap. Any further discussion? One would note, you might want to write this down, this is one of the first times I can recall where government has produced a motion or a resolution to decrease regulation and the scope of their remit. So they don't come along very often. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
I'm sorry, this constitutes a remote meeting, so we'll correct, we'll have to delay the vote.
We did that last time, didn't we? Oh, we didn't have the-
The public hearing for the text amendment, so it should be open for 24 hours for comments. So perhaps the next, since you've already voted, perhaps at the next meeting, if we can just have them affirm, I'll work with you on what to put on-
Just put it on the consent agenda for-
But it's not, it's not final tonight, I think, if you can just note that.
Okay. All right. Thank you for reminding me, under the current rules of a state of emergency statewide, if one member is appearing remotely, then we cannot have an actual vote until 24 hours elapsed for any public comment period that can be submitted. Any number of ways, you can call, leave a message, you can email, you can call and talk to any of the staff at the planning board or here at the county. So we will hold that matter open for a vote until our next meeting, which will be June Secondly, we have a public hearing to consider an economic development incentive for Project Paragon, and we have Ms. Bozer here from the Iredell Economic Development Corporation.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Mallory, and members of the board. We appreciate the opportunity to present this incentive request. I'm Jen Bozer, President and CEO of Iredell County Economic Development Corporation. I'd like to recognize Chad Thomas here with me tonight. He is our Director of Business Development and was the primary lead for this project. As announced last week by the State of North Carolina, Jeldwin is expanding their manufacturing footprint in the Charlotte region, and the City of Statesville and Iredell County are strategically positioned for the company's future growth and operations. Jeldwin is one of the world's largest store and window manufacturers, operating 117 manufacturing facilities in 19 countries, with over 22,000 people employed. Headquartered in Charlotte, North Carolina, Jeldwin designs, produces, and distributes an extensive range of interior and exterior doors, wood, vinyl, and aluminum windows, and related products for use in new construction, repair, remodeling, and remodeling of residential and non-residential buildings. The project proposes to create up to 235 jobs and a capital investment of just over 7.8 million in investment. The State of North Carolina approved a $2 million job development investment grant, also known as JDIG, for the project on May 4th. The state's participation in the project is significant, and it speaks to the company's commitment to create jobs at or above Iredell County's average wage, which currently sits at $51,136. The JDIG is performance-based and is a discretionary incentive program awarded only in competitive recruitment or retention projects. The state requires a match from the local jurisdiction for the JDIG, and last night, the City of Statesville Council approved an incentive grant for this project for up to $143,608 based on, on their policy. In accordance with Iredell County, County's incentive policy, Iredell EDC is requesting an economic incentive grant to Jeldwin from the county for up to $129,643, based on a capital investment of $7,875,000, and the creation of 175 jobs. The grant would be payable over five years, and is performance-based, and the payment is tied to the new taxable assessed value generated from the investment of the company. On behalf of Iredell County Economic Development Corporation, I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for your consideration of this grant, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Bozer?
Obviously, we're lucky to have Joe in here. They're, people know Anderson, but they, they don't know the name Joe in as much, but Joe is twice the product as Anderson, so we're lucky to have him.
That's good.
Okay, then I will go ahead and open the public hearing. I don't have anyone that has signed up to be heard, so I do inquire of anyone in the audience if you'd like to be heard. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing, and as in the previous action, we will delay our vote until June 1st to allow a 24-hour public comment period, under the same terms as I outlined before, contacting the county by mail, email, or phone call. All right. Thank you very much. I tell you what, y'all have had great success recently bringing really high-quality jobs to Iredell County, 235 good-paying positions. That's really what motivates us more than the bottom-line capital investment, which produces the taxes. Much more important to produce good-paying jobs.
Hopefully, we'll have some more for you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Keep bringing up.
We will now move on to items under paragraph eight of our agenda, which are administrative matters that are typically staff-present, technical in nature, and we hear these matters at our 5:00 pre-agenda meeting. And after hearing those, those that we consent to, we put on a consent agenda, those that we want to pull out and put on the 7:00 o'clock agenda for any reason we do. Of, of the seven items that were originally on this, we did add an eighth. And if, County Manager Moll, if you would please review those and tee them up.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item was a request from Iredell Statesville Schools for approval to transfer money between capital lines, and this is a requirement that anything over 10% needs to be approved by the board. There was a request from ICATS for approval to purchase and auto-renewing contract, and this is for scheduling software with Echo Line. The first-year cost is $171,661. Request from Emergency Medical Services for approval of a sole-source award to Sage Security Solutions to install an integrated access control system to mirror the access control systems they have in other facilities, and that's for an amount of $48,800. A request from Emergency Medical Services for approval of Budget Amendment Number 45 in the amount of $36,000, and to allocate the donation of funds towards community response support team efforts in Iredell County. There was a request from Tax Administration for approval of April 2021 refunds and releases. Commissioner's assignment for Partners Behavioral Health Board, which is Scotty Brown to serve in that capacity. And then the additional item that was added is to add the board-approved comparables for the market study. And there were two items that were added, two counties that were added to that list, which was Davie County and Wilkes County, and that was agreed by consensus by the board.
Is there any further comment on any of the administrative matters? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So move. Motion by Commissioner Hap. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
We are unanimous. The consent agenda is approved. There's one item that we pulled out. It's item 8.5, which is a request from the Emergency Medical Services to proclaim May 16th through 22nd, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week. And I'd ask Blair Ritchie to please present us the background on all that her department is doing.
Good evening. Thank you. I kind of feel like this EMS Week is a little more special than any other EMS Week I've participated in. The theme this year for EMS Week is This is EMS, Caring for Our Communities. And more than ever, I saw our staff step up and provide service to our communities. And with the support of our board in the last year, we have been able to build two other proactive programs to serve our community in different ways. We didn't know how perfect the timing for the Community Paramedic Program to start last January would be for COVID-19, especially in those initial efforts. So I want to say thank you for allowing us to expand. We already provide great emergency response, but now we've been able to invest in a proactive response to link those resources to our citizens and our community. So I just, I can't say enough about what I witnessed and how much time and effort that they spent in, in all the overtime hours and everything, all the vaccination clinics, the call centers. I just, I cannot brag enough, and we couldn't do it without your support, so thank you.
I think this probably ought to be Emergency Medical Services Year.
Yeah, yeah. It's been interesting.
I would like to read the proposed proclamation, that whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas Emergency Medical Services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value of the, and the accomplishments of Emergency Medical Service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Is there a motion to adopt this proclamation?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
We are unanimous. Now, therefore, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through 22nd, 2021, as Emergency Medical Services Week, with the theme This is EMS, Caring for Our Communities, and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Thank you.
Ms. Ritchie? Blair? Why don't you come on up? No, you get to come on up.
Oh.
I'm gonna give you something to take back with you.
Does anybody want to get around here? You can turn around and get a picture.
Good.
Thank all your team.
Appreciate you. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Norman.
Okay, item 10 is announcement of vacancies on boards and commissions. And County Manager Beth Moll will please announce those for the record.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. We have three announcements for the Farmland Preservation Advisory Board, one announcement for ICARE Board of Directors, two announcements for Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Finance Authority, one announcement Jury Commission, one announcement Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, one announcement Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees, two announcements for Mooresville Planning Board ETJ Assignment, one announcement Statesville Plan, excuse me, Statesville Board of Adjustment ETJ, one announcement Statesville Planning Board ETJ, and one announcement for Troutman Planning Board ETJ.
Those announcements, we will be taking applications. If you will go on the county website under Boards and Commissions, you can review all of these vacancies, exactly what the positions entail, and some of them require certain qualifications in terms of where you live, or your professional background for some of these boards. So we encourage you to get applications in, and we will entertain those, or as many as we can, at our next meeting on June 1st. We have, moving on, we have no additional appointments to boards or commissions. Any unfinished business? This is a public comment period. We have two folks that have signed up. The public comment period is not limited to any particular subject. You have three minutes. If you'll please watch the clock at, in front of our clerk, Amy Anderson, or this clock over here, which is, whichever is more convenient. And when I call you out your name, if you'll please come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record. First up, Tommy Hamel.
My name's Tommy Hamel. I live in Statesville, 834 Kentwood Drive. You guys know me, I've been here before. I'm here to comment on the lawsuit over the statue. I think it's pretty disgusting, actually, that we're going through this. You guys played back and forth over it. I came in here, I tried to warn you. Now here we are again, they filed the lawsuit, right? Has been one filed?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. I hope you guys will fight this, or do whatever you got to do. If I need to come to court, I'll come to court. I'm sure there's other people in this community that will too. It's pretty foul that the NAACP would even bring this lawsuit against us when they've done nothing for the black community. I don't see them doing anything about the drugs over there, the violence, or any of that. But they're up here on a statue that has nothing to do with racism. Their name, in general, has more to do with racism than that statue out there. The word colored, which is in their name, was the first step in separation of stature in the black community. Colored was the term that was used for an educated black person back in the old days. The rest of them were known as Negroes, and colored people were the people who worked in the homes, and that were educated, knew English, knew how to read and write. They're using that name today. I ask, is the NAACP gonna stop using that? That, to me, is more racist than that statue. You know, that was the first breakup of the black community, was the word colored, to call them colored. So, you know, I'm at a loss for words here. I work every day, I pay taxes here, I enjoy the culture, the history, it's all important in its own- in its own way. There's good and bad and everything. This is ridiculous that we're with a lawsuit here. Maybe we should get a lawsuit against the NAACP, you know, for race-baiting. You know, they haven't done nothing but race-bait in this town. Everything's racist, everything's... I'm so tired of hearing about everything is racist. It's ridiculous. If you simply go down there and read, you guys can go down there and read the plaque down there, it explains to you about that statue, has nothing to do with racism, that's all in your head. Yeah, and we had a preacher down here the other day, grandstanding on that statue claiming he was a descendant of Robert E. Lee. He's a liar. That was a lie. So, you guys hang out with liars and you race-bait. This is, this is really ridiculous and it's starting to piss me off and sorry for my language, but that's where I'm at. I'm done with it. You guys played hot potato with this issue and you got it to where it's at now. If you just would have been, made a phone call to those people and said, "Are you going to remove the statue or not?" They could have told you no over the phone, you wouldn't have had to bring it out in the public, it wouldn't have started this whole mess. You get what I'm saying? I'm not trying to attack you guys personally. I know this job is hard, probably harder now than it's ever been. But, please fight it, fight it.
Thank you, Mr. Hamel. Richard Coleman.
My name is Richard Coleman, I live at 262 Judas Road in Mooresville. I'm a Christian, sorry, I am a Christian, a husband, a father, and a small business owner in Iredell County. I actually come from a racing background. I spent 15 years as a pit crew member for some of the best teams in NASCAR. My mother always told me, "Don't play in traffic for a living," and I figured out a way to how to get paid to do it, so... But being a pit crew member is tough, because if you're slow, or you miss spots, or God forbid, or you lose spots, or God forbid, you lose a race, you are the biggest POS on the planet come Monday morning and you might not have a job on Tuesday. But, so, I've spent a fair amount of time in my life in a thankless position and I'm up here today because I wanted to thank you. I've spent a fair amount of time of observing local government and supporting local government and I've listened to some of the conversations that have gone on locally within the last few months about, you know, how to allocate funds here or there. And I think that the commission, and especially those that work with the commission, the office, the county manager, the county lawyer, the people that work as their staff, they've done a fantastic job. Not only have we increased resources across education and law enforcement, but we've increased resources across the board without increasing the burden to the taxpayers. So, all I'm here today, all I'm here to do, to say tonight, is thank you and God bless you for what you do and your stewardship toward this community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coleman. That's all that we have on the list to be heard, but I would ask if anyone out in the audience would like to be heard. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public comment period and move on to any new business to come before the county commission. County's managers report.
Chairman Mallory, just a few items to inform about. Iredell County will continue to follow the Centers, the Center for Disease Controlled Guidelines and Governor Cooper's executive order. And if, I'm sure everybody's aware, Friday, the governor lifted mandatory capacity and gathering limits, social distancing requirements, and the mandatory mask requirements. Pursuant to that, and in keeping with CDC guidelines and the governor's executive order, we've rescinded the addendum to the proclamation, the state of emergency proclamation, lifting the wearing of face masks in county-operated facilities. That was done effective midnight on Friday, the 14th. However, there are some county departments that provide services that still require and are mandated to wear face coverings. And that is pursuant to the governor's executive order. For example, ICATS is public transportation. It's mandatory to continue to wear face coverings with public transportation. Health Department provides public health services, Employee Health Clinic, those types of facilities are still mandated to wear face coverings. So, what we are doing is, if there is a county facility that we are, we and the governor's executive order is still requiring face coverings, we will have that posted on the entrance of those facilities to make sure that everyone's aware. So, you know, please make sure you know that when we have that posted, we do, we do ask that you continue to wear your face covering in those facilities, but other facilities, for example, this facility, we're no longer requiring that. The COVID call center, we created a call center to help with the sheer magnitude of calls we were getting from the community that was housed at the Public Safety Center and our EOC. Now that those calls have dwindled and minimized, we're still receiving those calls, but they are not to the magnitude that they were, so as of tomorrow, we're relocating that call center to the Health Department. Our citizens will not see anything different, there will still be people, same people answering the phones, we just won't have as many. So, we're decreasing some of the staffing. We had pulled staff from other county departments to man that call center. We're sending those staff members back out to their respective departments. We will continue to have two temporary employees that we're using CARES Act funds to pay for those temporary staffers that will be staffing the call center and it'll be housed at the Health Department. We talked a little bit and actually the board agreed to, by consent, to place on the consent agenda, the board-approved comparables for the market study, so thank you for that guidance. We will certainly move forward with that, adding those comparables to the, to the contract for that study. And there are some items that are follow-up items as a result of our budget workshops. And I know there have been dialogue and some suggestions about, "What about this and what about that?" If you will give me all of those suggestions and ideas and let me and our finance department and our budget team put numbers to that, I will get that back to the board and the board can tell us specifically what items you would like to have in the budget. And hopefully, if we can get those in the next week or two, then that will give us time to rebalance the budget and make those changes and those additions and then get the budget ordinance ready to go. Our public hearing on the budget is June 1st. So, please, please make sure you give me those, all those things that you would like us to look at and put some numbers to, and I can get that back to the board for consideration. That's all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moll. And currently, the Health Department is giving out vaccines on appointment.
Yes, they are giving vaccines at the Health Department on Turnersburg Highway. You just have to make an appointment and then you can go there to get your vaccine.
All right. We had one closed session, or a closed session with one item, attorney-client pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 Subsection A3 relative to litigation by the Skip McCall et al. with the Iredell County Board of Commissioners and other legal matters. Nothing to report out for public consumption. Is there anything else to come before the board? All hearts free? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion, we adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I wasn't sure about that.